Can I have the roll call, Robert?
Sure, Chair Cherokee.
Here.
Vice Chair Mobek.
Here.
Jack Ringham.
Here.
Greg Conlon. Has not joined yet. Paul Jones. Has not joined yet. Jim Janz. Has not joined yet, and then we have Jim Massey.
Okay, let's move on.
Acknowledge.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, and it looks like we have Paul joining in now.
Okay, great.
Right.
Is our new council member liaison, Bob Toledo.
That is correct.
Thought it was Diane.
She was. She's alternate now.
Oh, okay.
And we'll get a new one next year, because Bob's just serving out the term of our previous council member, so.
Hey, you should be done with me in November.
Okay, so I just want to confirm, does everybody have the agenda on their screen?
Yeah, I can see your screen.
Yes.
Great, looks like we have Jim Janz joining now as well.
Okay. Why don't we move on to public comments? Are there any public comments?
I don't see any members of the public on the line.
Okay.
And I did not receive any public comments in advance in the meeting.
Okay. So let's move on to item three, approval of minutes. Are there any? Excuse me?
I was gonna say, so the recommended approval.
Oh, okay. Well, first, I'd like to, we have a motion to approve, but I'd like to ask if there's anyone that has amendments or changes that they'd like to see in the February 1st minutes?
No, I thought they looked good.
Okay, seeing none, do I have a second for the motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, Paul has seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any noes or abstentions? None noted, okay. Let's move on, no presentations, and then so we'll move on to the regular agenda. So the first item is the draft 2022 High Speed Rail Authority Business Plan. Robert, can you introduce the idea?
Sure, thank you Chair, members of the committee. As noted in our previous meeting, High Speed Rail has issued its business plan, draft business plan for 2021, it's released currently for public comment. Public comment is due on April 11th, and I'm going to thank the members of the committee that had provided comments to staff. I took those and compiled the draft comment letter, seeking input and approval to move forward with a recommendation to council to submit the public comment letter to the High Speed Rail Authority. And so this is an action item and fully open to receiving comments, edits. I did get an email from our vice chair with a few edits for consideration, and I can let him go through those, but what I'd like to do is, at the end of the, at the end of this item, have either a recommendation to move the letter as amended by the committee or delegated down to either staff or a subcommittee to finalize the letter. The intent is to get it on to the council's agenda at their April 6th meeting, so that the letter can get sent out to the authority in time. And so right now, hopefully on your screen, you have the the draft letter.
Yep, I see it. Perhaps we, we should go through John's edits first? Or did you just want to describe them broadly and then?
Sure, I can do that. So the first comment, I mean, is really related to spelling out Transbay Terminal, the first time that we use the TBT abbreviation. He had a comment with regards to the asterisks that I had put into the letter on the timelines, and I can either note it as estimated, I pulled these numbers from partially from one of the comments that I got from one of the rail committee members, but I couldn't find all of the the times and distances, and so the ones with the asterisks, asterisks are, I'm gonna say estimated.
Paul might have something to say about that.
I was gonna suggest 125 miles for the president of Bakersfield.
It's there.
Oh, oh yeah, sure it is.
Since I couldn't find it in the actual document, that's why it has the asterisks on it.
It wasn't, I took that from earlier work.
I, yeah, I don't think, I also looked for some of these numbers, and I couldn't find them in the document either. I don't think it's completely, it's, it's all there, maybe they just skipped those. One thing I did note was, I think the Bakersfield to Palmdale is 79 miles, not 70.
Okay, is that, is that in there?
Yeah, it's on, let me tell you the page number, hold on, I gotta find my browser. There we go, it's on page 42. They have that big graphic on page 42.
Okay. Alright, so I can correct that to 79, I'll put, underneath, I'll put an asterisk and just say estimated.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if you just say what the asterisk mean, that's fine, there's nothing wrong with the asterisk, it's just that I couldn't find what they meant.
Yeah. And then the other two comments were near the tail end on page four. Deletion of the, call it the second paragraph right before funding. And comment about a run on, maybe a slightly long sentence in the last paragraph. And so what I'll do is I'll go back to the beginning of the document and go ahead and seek input from from the committee as to basically either paragraph by paragraph or page by page, so that we can get through this in a timely manner.
Okay.
So are there any comments on the first page?
Yes, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Jack.
It says the planned state of the travel time will be two hours and 40 minutes. I think that's out of date. I think later on, we have something that says it's gonna be 188 minutes, which is three hours and eight minutes.
That's our estimate based on the information.
The 380 is a sum of the individual segment time.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, the two hours and 40 minutes, Jack, is to come to required in Proposition 1A, and that's what they have said here, they're, they're going to meet all the requirements of Proposition 1A. So that is an effective declaration of that time.
Well, if they say it's 188 minutes, they're saying they're not gonna meet that requirement.
Well, that's sort of what we're telling them.
And so that, just to enumerate that on the, the first line on the second page, in reviewing the individual segment travel times, it appears that the total travel time would be closer to three hours and eight minutes versus the two hours and 40 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there, were there any other comments on that first page before we move on to the second page? Seeing none, let's move on to the second page.
Okay, so on the second page, I have your noted correction of 79 miles from Bakersfield to Palmdale, and the putting down the asterisk is estimated.
If you change the distance to 79 miles, then you're gonna have to recalculate the required average speed down there in paragraph numbered two.
Average.
We say 23 minutes would require an average speed of 206, I assume that was calculated on 70. And now you're calling it 79, so that must go up to.
I think, Paul, I think that calculation was from you.
Yeah. Okay, well, if it's 79 miles in 23 minutes. That's, well, that's 206 miles an hour, you've got the right number there then.
Okay, so we'll just correct it to 79.
It's okay, it was the 70 that was wrong, not the two.
It was the 70 that was wrong, not the 70, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think the other comment on this page was capitalization on the census bureau. Okay.
Any comments on this page? If none, I guess we can move to page three.
I agree, three's good, it seems to capture all the information about the capital costs.
Was this the page with the deleted paragraph that?
No.
This next page, okay. Just wanted to know what, what it was that we're, we're taking out, that's all.
I think it's a nice touch to quote their Northern California Regional Director, Director is predicting what they say in the, in the plan.
I'm not gonna take credit for interviewing them, these are from newspaper articles that are referenced down below.
Even so, good catch.
Yes.
Okay, any additional feedback on this page?
Nope, and then let's move on to the next page.
Oh, yeah, one, one more in the second under capital costs in the fifth lineup, you say projects area where the authority does not have the experience. I think areas is unnecessary there.
Okay, so hold on, let me just, where are we at?
Two, four, it's the sixth lineup from the end of the second paragraph. Second word in.
From the bottom of the page, sixth lineup, or?
No, he said the second.
It's the.
Second paragraph.
No, it's the first paragraph.
Oh, first paragraph.
Yeah.
So first paragraph.
Wait a minute. Projects area.
It's in the, it's in the capital costs, and it's about eight or nine lines down from the start.
Okay.
Oh, yes, there it is, many major projects area.
Okay.
Okay. Area doesn't seem to fit there.
So there are many major project, okay.
Where the authority.
Okay.
And so I can either so if that's okay, I will take the S from projects and move it to areas.
Okay, and then Jack has a comment after that.
Yes, Jack.
I have a comment on the bus increasing from 68 billion to 105. It says it's mainly to steadily increasing experience on a different segments. I think a major portion of it is inflation. I don't know if we're expressing these in current year dollars or what year dollars, but.
They are listed in the plan as being expressed in year of expenditure dollars, but those are subject to inflation too, as you make the estimate in succeeding years. So I, I mean, I don't know.
All right, I'm I'm gonna say that as they have gone through their project, costs have increased on a number of things, and me, and the intent of the statement is that for lack of a better way to put it, they're learning as they go, and they are steadily increasing the costs based on what they are learning, and so I think that they've even indicated that they have changed their management and oversight structure, particularly related to right of way and other things based on their experience, and that has, that has as they did that in terms of trying to get a handle on it, the costs did go up substant, substantially, and I think that even given the quote down below is a as you go through the discussion of the tunnel, you know, the, the cost of that went up by 40%. And so as they're going along, they're gaining experience, but the costs are going up. I don't think we want to defend why the costs are going up, I think it's more just enumerating the fact that they estimated a 69, $68 billion project back in 2012, and now it's already 105 billion, and I think we all expect that in 2026, couple of business plans from now, it's going to be substantially higher.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay, any other comments on this page? Okay, seeing none, why don't we move on to page four?
Okay, and so this, oops, slid up a little too far. And so the recommendation was to delete the statement about it's our belief that as with all large capital projects, the costs will continue to grow. Oops, I just had Craig's in the waiting room, I apologize, let me let Greg in. As we were talking, I, I missed the fact that he was joining, so Greg, I apologize. So, comment is to delete that that statement there.
Makes sense.
I'm the guy that suggested deleting it, and I just think it's a very weak sentence, I mean, I don't think they care what we believe, and I, we've established no basis for the 150 to 200 billion, it's just a swag at this point, I mean, it's probably realistic, but.
I, I have no objection to deleting or any other edits that the committee is interested in.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with deleting it as well, makes sense.
Okay. And so as we move through, I'll leave the last paragraph, the summary for further discussion, and John, you can enumerate the comments that, that you had, and we can work on what the committee would like to see as the closing statements.
Go ahead, Paul.
I, I'd like to raise an, an item that sort of got lost in time. A lady from Southern California by the name of Susan McAdam has been working for a long time to get recognition of the fact that there is a curve on the the bridge over the San Joaquin River that has both horizontal and vertical changes at the same time, and she is determined that that is a danger to derating trains going over it, and she has recently had a finding from the California Public Utilities Commission that that is in fact a danger. Do we or do we not want to put that in our letter?
Is this, this the same gal that addressed us maybe three or four years ago, Paul?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
She does not give up. Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not directly discussed about in the business plan, but it is an area of concern, so I'm not sure if it's, because this is a comment letter on the business plan itself rather than specific problems in parts of the project itself.
Well, that certainly is valid.
I mean, we could I mean, Robert, what other types of ways our committee could get a feedback to the High Speed Rail, High Speed Rail group in terms of this type of concern, is it?
I think that there are a number of ways, number of ways to do it, the concern that I would would have is that segment is not really part of something that affects the town specifically. But I do understand and appreciate that if it is a safety issue, it should be brought to light with some sure Ms. McAdams is doing, but there is, there are other avenues, one would be we typically invite High Speed Rail to come and talk to us at least once a year, we can invite them and it can be brought up in that avenue. Committee members as individuals are more than willing to send letters and other comments to the High Speed Rail Committee or make public comment at their, at their meetings. We can table this as a discussion item for the committee at a future date, if you'd like, to talk further about how that can be done or offline, as long as it's not a quorum. You know, I'm happy to talk with any member of the committee about, you know, other avenues and certainly open other suggestions by members of the committee as how things can be, can be raised, but I, I think that the as, as the chair indicated, this letter is probably more, it needs to be more directed to responding to the document as presented.
Fine.
Okay, so Paul, yeah, just follow with me and Robert in terms of the resolution you, you think is, is you would like to see from this and will.
I, I think that action is appropriate, and I think Robert's comments are entirely fitting.
Okay.
So let's just drop it.
Okay.
For now.
Yeah, yeah, just let us know if you think of a, a way we, if we as a committee should act on it, and then we'll, we'll agendize it for a future.
We, we can take it up later, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
It's not gonna go away.
No, I'm sure, we've got, we've got years to.
Well, just out of curiosity, I, I know it's not part of it, but is, is that structure built?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, maybe then we don't have years.
Well, the first thing they do, first thing they plan to do is run conventional trains down it. So that might be very interesting.
Okay, so yeah, let's stay on the letter, is there anything else in the last page?
Well, like, again, I want to leave that last paragraph, so if there's nothing preceding that last paragraph.
I don't know that it's exactly this last page, but it seems to me that there's a point we we could have made that we didn't, and I'm, I'm not sure I got my facts straight, but let me try. I think their projections of funding and ridership are inherently contradictory, because to get the ridership they project by the year they think they'll get it, they've got to have a system up and running. And their projected funding to do that doesn't come close to those years. Seems to me they can't have it both ways.
Do you have any way to demonstrate that mathematically, or just to point out that contradiction, or?
Well, I mean, they say that by 2031, I'm making this up, because I don't have the, the plan open in front of me, but as I recall, they were saying by 2031, they were gonna have, you know, that they had in hand or projects of, you know, less than half of the funding, and yet by 2033, they were gonna have millions of people riding this. I don't see, I don't see how you can do one if you can't do the other. On the other hand, you know, I don't know, maybe it takes too long to, to put that all up and whether they pay any attention to it or not, I don't know, but
I think.
If I were a thesis exam, I would challenge them on that.
Do we, does the committee want, maybe John and Robert to put something together on that, and then because this, this will probably be our last chance to review it as a committee, and we could direct some action and adding some text on that if, if that's of interest to the committee, or we could not have it, that's kind of our two options, I suppose, at this stage.
I, I think that's a good idea to have John and Robert make some changes there to suit them.
Okay.
Okay, Robert, I will go dig out the numbers that I'm referring to and the, the citation in the plan where they come.
Okay.
Send it to you, and then you do what you want with it, if you think it's an important thing to include in the letter, fine, if you don't, that's also fine.
What would be helpful, we can talk offline, John, as to how to put it in. And so I, I will note that I did have this one statement here about their current funding projections being about $25 billion through 2030, which is less, I think, leading into what you're saying, John, less than 25% of what they're, well, that's the overall capital cost, not the usable segment cost, and so I think what they're looking at is a usable segment, and I'm not quite sure whether or not the 25 million, 25 billion is sufficient to get them to that first usable segment. But I'm happy to talk with you offline and.
Okay, well, maybe. Projections, I thought those ridership projections were talking about the full project.
They got there, their first riders are within the valley.
Okay, well, I'll go back and look, and if I think it's still worth talking about, I'll, we can get together, if it's not, if I've just sort of misread their ridership projections, then fine, we're done.
Okay. So John, why don't you go ahead and discuss the last paragraph and your suggestion on kind of cleaning it up a little bit?
Well, okay, it was really just the last sentence of the last paragraph, the one that starts four lines down saying, we urge the development of a full funding and implementation plan. And I, that's fine, but it, it goes on for four more lines, and it seems to me it's kind of a rambly sentence. And I think a concluding sentence of a letter like this ought to have some punch to it. And so I'm not suggesting any change in the content particularly, I guess what I was suggesting was let's, let's take what we got, we re-urge, we urge the development of a full funding and implementation plan that is more realistic, period.
Period, I totally agree with that, John. That's a, that's a decl.
That's a, that's a declarative end of the thing and sums up our point.
Oh, okay. Well, I was, I was gonna, maybe we, maybe that's a good point, Jim, that we should just end it there.
The rest of it we don't need. As you said, it's a long, rambling sentence and stuff. Let's just end with something that's definitive. We don't want this, period.
Or break it down in separate sentences, shorten up the sentences.
Leave the last, last half out. Just stop it realistic, period.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Who, who wrote it?
Me.
Don't you want to defend it?
No. Like I said, I mean, I took input from the committee as, as it came and I tried to put it in a format that would you know, would be suitable for review by the committee as a, as a draft letter. And ultimately, our intent is to get this before the council so that they can act to send it out. As, as you are doing, they may or may not wordsmith it or delegate it down to, you know, to address any comments that they may have. But I'm happy to end the letter at, at realistic.
That's perfect, as far as I'm concerned.
Sounds good. Okay.
So just to close this out, can I get a motion or a chair through, through the chair? If we can get a motion that I guess delegates the incorporation of the comments received today with any additional feedback from the vice chair for inclusion in the final letter to be submitted to council. That should, that I think will get us there with a recommendation taken to council at their April 6 meeting.
Would anyone like to put forward that motion?
Show move.
Second? Do I hear a second?
This is Jim Miles second it.
Okay.
Okay, so was it Paul or Jim that made the motion?
Well, it was me, but I think Paul and I both spoke at the same time, so pick one you like.
Oh, yeah, take him.
All right.
Okay.
Paul is motion. And Jim Janz.
Do we need to do individual votes or can we, do we just say all in favor, I?
Well, I can run through real quick.
Sure. Okay, roll call. Okay.
Cherokee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mollback?
Aye.
Member Jones?
Aye.
Member Massey?
Aye.
Member Janz?
Aye.
Member Conlon?
I've stayed, I didn't hear, participate on the changes.
Okay, Member Ringham?
Reluctantly, I, I think the whole thing is a joke. The whole idea. It's based on the premise that this is going to happen. I think everything that we've read and heard and seen comparisons to other lines around the world, the chances of this being a success or even being completed are very remote. And I think somebody instead of acting as though we're going along with the fact that they're doing this should raise some questions about its feasibility. And I'll remind you of the mission statement of the High-Speed Rail Authority. It says, "Initiate construction of high-speed rail system capable of sustained speeds of 200 mile per hour or greater." There's nothing in their mission that asks them to ask them, ask them to give the, evaluate the feasibility of anything. This first compromise I made was just saying, okay, we'll make it best in the Central Valley.
Okay, thank you, Jack. So let's move on to our next item.
Okay, so Chair Green again.
The 5B, is if I be the station remodel update?
That's correct. So, thank you, Chair. Last night at the city council meeting, the city council authorized stat, authorized city manager to enter into an agreement with Garra Baglia Architecture, Inc. for the design of the rail station remodel. So with that, we will be working to get that agreement in place and get started on, on the design. There is a subcommittee that has been assigned to assist staff in managing the project and, and in meeting the council's goals with regards to the, to the station building. And so with that available to answer any questions.
I, I'd like to make a comment. I had heard that there's a possibility of putting the history room in the new remodeled station. And I would absolutely caution against that. I think it would be vandalized and destroyed over a short period of time. And I believe the history room, if put together, belongs in the civic center and not in the train station. I hope I was just hearing a rumor, but I would strongly advise against that.
Yeah, the Heritage Room is located in the historic council chambers. And so that's where the majority of that's going to be located.
Thank you, Robert.
How, how long is that design going to take?
The goal would be to be able to get it out for construction, next construction season. So next spring, summer would be out.
Okay.
Robert, I was listening to part of the council meeting last night. And then I had to drop off or something, but there was some discussion going on about whether this current contract was going to result in construction drawings that could be put out for bid or whether it was going to be sort of a conceptual design that would then require a more detailed design for construction. Did that get resolved?
Yeah, this contract is for full design, full design documents to go out to bid.
Okay, good.
It includes getting the necessary, you know, submitting, getting the building permits for the work as well.
Okay, all right, that's, that's much better.
Is it the intent of this design to design what could be a functioning station? Or is it to design a museum piece?
The intent of the design to integrate the building to the town center and potentially use it as a rail history museum or museum of rail history in the town of Atherton, accounting for potential audiovisual displays and other displays within the area. And the primary things are going to be, number one, taking care of a lot of the deferred maintenance of the structure and to, and doing those kinds of repairs, reorienting the opening so that rather than being closed to the town center and open now to what is the, the fenced-off rail corridor is to reorient the opening towards the town center so that it is more, more cohesive. And in sealing off the back, rehabilitating the, again, the structure and outfitting it for, for displays. Some minor landscaping right around the structure where we have the kiosk sign and some of the smaller planter beds that were not done as part of the town center project. The item that was a potential additional item that the council elected not to include at this time is additional landscape screening. I'll call it towards Watkins Avenue along the rail corridor. So that screening is something that is potentially left to a future date.
Jim, again, I want to go back on the history thing. You just mentioned history rail museum and earlier we had, you said with the history was going to be in the Heritage Room. I, I believe we should not put any his, history, historical things in this thing because I would fear it would be vandalized and destroyed. So which is?
So the town history stuff associated with the heritage group is going to be in the Heritage Room at the old town center, at the old building. The council has has a desire to have a public space that showcases rail. And there's the potential for that to be incorporated into this building, but that's at the direction of the council.
Well, once again, I would urge against putting anything of any value into historically, given the current situation with smash and grab, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I got to say. I'll drop the issue.
Paul, you had a comment or question?
No, I just questioned, could we know who's on the subcommittee working with the architect?
Rick and Diane, Paul.
Rick and Diane. Okay, thank you.
Robert, has anybody ever considered including in the Caltrain station that clock that's out there that Bob, whatever his name was, put up several years ago, decades ago?
Now that we have ownership of the site, we are, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's been some conversations with, with Sandy about potentially taking over that, that maintenance. I think that there's either an annual maintenance or other check that needs to happen. I haven't looked at the clockworks myself yet and I think we'll be doing that soon.
I had a brief conversation with Sandy about it not too long ago and I'm having dinner with him tonight, so maybe I'll bug him about it again because I think the clock works fine on one half and not on the other half.
Yeah, we might need to maintain it and I'm going to say that I, it, it may be that there's a particular clocksmith that might need to come out and take a look at it, but I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I asked the big clock guy that's got a shop down by the post office in Menlo Park and he said he was too old to climb ladders, so that didn't go very far.
Okay, is that Sandy Critten that you guys are talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. What does Sandy Critten have to do with all this?
He knows how to fix clocks supposedly.
I see. Okay.
I don't know. As I say, I'm supposed to have a St. Patrick's Day dinner with a bunch of people, including Sandy tonight, and I will see where he stands on it.
Any other comments or questions on this item before we move on? Seeing none? Move on to 5C Watkins Avenue Safety Improvements and Quiet Zone Extension?
Sure, thank you, Chair. So this is a brief status update. The design of the Watkins Avenue Safety Improvements have gone past the 65% stage. Town provide, town staff provided comments to Caltrain and their consultant. They bought the Caltrain, Caltrain and the consultant have also received comments from the CPUC on the safety improvements and there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to review those comments with between the consultant and CPUC so they can move forward with getting it to 95%. The goal has been to get the design done by sometime in June so that it can go through its regulatory review process and go out to bid with the intent of construction beginning in January. And so things seem to be appropriately on track. Also, I do want to indicate that the town has sent out its notice of intent letter to extend the Atherton Fair Oaks Quiet Zone to include the Watkins Avenue Crossing that was mailed out and dated February 18th. And so there's a 60-day comment period associated with that. So we are just now closing up on the first month. And so.
Any comments so far?
Not that I have seen, but it's not uncommon for those things to come at the last minute.
Okay.
But there, I mean, should we be making some comments?
Are you opposed to the quiet zone?
Oh, it's only if you're opposed to it. Okay.
No, well, the, the letter is directed to the regulatory authorities here. I, hopefully I'm pulling it up. The regulatory authorities and the and the, the folks that operate in the corridor. So this letter is officially sent to the FRA and copied on it are additional. So you have the FRA, you have the CPUC, you have the Joint Powers Board, Union Pacific, Railroad Safety Branch of the Department of Transportation and the police chief. So those are the folks that are officially noticed with the letter. And so I'm going to.
Does the letter ask for anything? Is it asked for approval by anybody?
We don't need approval.
Oh, okay. All right. Then my question is, forget it.
Okay.
Yeah, so and I'm going to say that, I would say we're not anticipating, hopefully not anticipating any comments from the CPUC and the FRA. They're involved in the review of the design and the improvements at Watkins. And if they have any requirements for any safety features, we're hoping that they provide those direct comments through the design process so that they are incorporated with the safety improvements.
Yeah. Okay. Any other?
Is there any way of structuring this so that it can cover the entire right-of-way within Atherton's borders? And lend itself perhaps to be extended by Menlo Park without leaving a gap?
I, I, I believe that it is structured to be able to do that because as, we only have two crossings. And the sounding requirement, as I recall, is a quarter mile in advance of a crossing.
Yep. So Menlo Park could extend it, they would have to quad, quad gate all their crossings so that they could have a continuous quiet zone as well, added on to our quiet zone that they wanted.
If they had a quiet zone for Ensignel, it would, it would stretch into ours.
Yes, although it's a little bit of a gray area because Ensignel is within a quarter mile of the next, is it Oak Grove? Because it's so close, I I'd probably have to ask Nerissa in terms of what, how, how would they actually, how, how you would define where the quiet zone begins and ends? Because each of the Menlo Park rail crossings are so close to each other, I think they actually have to be all all quad gated for them to be a continuous quiet zone.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that's true.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Jim, did you have a question? Jim Janz?
Yeah, related issues, just curious. Bob, have you received, I have noticed that there has been, have been more soundings of the horn of late, in the last few days, week or so, particularly early in the morning. I'm just curious whether you've heard any complaints from anybody or if anyone else has noticed this. John, perhaps you have?
There's a couple of trains that come usually northbound at around six o'clock in the morning that have been blowing their horns ever since the quiet zone started. Couple of rogue engineers that don't like us or I don't know what they don't like, but.
Yeah, one of the things that I'm not quite clear, I'm going to say that we have to keep in mind that there are workers that are working within the rail corridor. And I don't know what hours that they're out there, but they they are sounding their horns and are going to continue sounding their horns when there's any potential risk on the corridor. I think we can talk in the next topic about the recent things that happened with Caltrain.
Yes.
That's fair. There are people out there.
Any other questions or comments on this item? If not, let's move, oh, go ahead.
Answer, John, it was Bob, going back to the last time, it was Bob Simons.
Yeah, that's the.
Built that clock. Built that clock, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. And that's the five D Caltrain update.
Yeah, so I'll keep this brief. So Caltrain has approved their governance reform plan. I think we're all noticed on that, and I think there's been in agreement on the money and where it's coming from to reimburse Sam Trans. And I believe that also includes the
Interest?
Whether you call it interest or other value add based on the right-of-way. So they are going to be continuing to work on any sort of formal agreements and get that set out. Caltrain is seeking additional funding to cover the the cost gaps on their most recent global settlement with Balfour Beatty to help them close that and finish off, finish off the project. They were continuing to work on installing facilities. They had, they have some signal work that's going on right now, I believe, in San Mateo and Burlingame. And they have adjusted their schedule to accommodate that work, including, I believe, some single tracking potentially in that area. And so that that's ongoing. And then unfortunately, there was an accident in San Bruno in which the train hit a vehicle that was hanging, I don't know if it was hanging over the track, but in San Bruno, there was an unfortunate incident between the train and a contractor vehicle, and there were a few folks that were injured. And so the NTSB, I believe, is doing their investigation. Our thoughts are with those folks that were injured, both, you know, the construction workers, Caltrain, folks of the Caltrain family, as well as others that were on the train at the time.
I have a few more things to add on the Caltrain updates. The Caltrain Board did approve the agreement. But it still has to be approved by each of the individual agencies in the counties, so Sam Trans, VTA, and San Francisco Board of Supervisors. So the Sam Trans discussion will be interesting, whether they choose to accept the agreement with the extra interest payments, or they want, or any other differences with the proposal. Because it's not just the money, there's also the change of control that that the Caltrain Board is asking for as well. In terms of the accident that occurred in that happened, the interesting thing was that, you know, positive train control was, you know, supposed to stop these types of accidents, and the train, the train, the Caltrain has had PTC in operations since, well, they started in twenty nineteen, and it's been fully certified since twenty twenty. And it crashed into the Balfour Beatty work train. So either something went wrong with the positive train control system, or the work train was using some other process and bypassed it, and you know, something in the safety protocol was missed of some sort. So the NTSB is going to put out a preliminary report sometime in the beginning of April, so we'll know at least their initial findings, because they have a data recorder from the train to kind of see what what it recorded and what was going on. But though, the full report will probably take a year for it to be completed. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Is there any reason to be concerned about the the operation not working?
Well, I think we'll find out from the preliminary report and the full report from the NTSB. They're a pretty good agency in terms of putting out all the facts out there. So we'll have to wait and see from the report exactly what they find.
Well, I don't know if it's our responsibility, but it seems to me they should change their process to protect the crews that are working on the track while they find out why the train ran through it. I mean, it seems to me they could do things manually in the interim before they get the report to protect the crews that are working on the track. But I don't know if that's our jurisdiction.
Yeah, it's important, but I'm not sure what we could what we can exactly do to tell them to, I mean, there are safety protocols, they're supposed to be put in place. If they need to improve it, then we could recommend something, but I don't think we know enough about rail safety protocols to, I, because we can't, we don't have a concrete recommendation to make to them. That's, that's kind of
They are they are working to make sure that this doesn't, that this doesn't occur again. I think that they they, in terms of the statements that, the limited statements that they are allowed to provide, this is, has really had an impact on Caltrain and their, and their staff. And so it's something that's at the forefront of their minds.
Well, I would think they had a procedure before they had the train control and whatever they did before to protect the crews, that they should go back to that, whatever it was, if they had any. But I'll, I'll be quiet.
I don't know what the timeframe is for their electrification project, but technological advances in battery-powered trains are moving ahead pretty fast. And it may be that by the time this electrification is finished and the wires are up, that they'll have battery-driven trains. They won't need the wires.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Well, this positive train control has gone way back to the CBOS system that they tried to develop themselves. And the, the whole thing has been shrouded in a lot of misconception and poorly stated positions and some bad analysis. I think it's most unfortunate this happened, but I don't see that it could be a surprise based on the history of the, of the work.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Why don't we move to five E, the grade separation discussion?
Okay, so this item was put on the agenda at the request of the Chair and Mr. Conlin to talk about great separations, activities, studies, and other things that are happening along the corridor. And so I think there was some previous discussion about some studies that were ongoing in other jurisdictions with regards to elevating or lowering the the train in various jurisdictions. This is just here as an opportunity for the committee to discuss. As you all know, there's currently no proposal to do great separation within the town.
You want me to comment?
Greg, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think my concern is in the traffic congestion that will occur when both the high-speed rail and the Caltrains, trains are running like twenty trains an hour, and that the safety issues on traffic will be very serious. And I just think that Palo Alto is doing a they're doing the, all the work to build a trench. But I don't think, I think they have another alternative also, but I'm not sure what it is. I tried to find it. They say it's on their website, but I couldn't find it today when I looked for it. But it's probably a similar distance, about a mile. That there's, I don't know where it starts, at Charleston or Church Avenue and goes south for about a mile. And I know that the county gave them seven hundred million dollars for great separations. And I think that that's, their idea is to use that money for either trenching or whatever the other option is that they're looking at. And I just think that we should be aware that that there is probably a significant problem of traffic control, once all this gets up and running. And, you know, I can't think that you know, and I, Malcolm Dudley, he always argued that Atherton was donating fifty million dollars a year through Prop A. And I'm not sure how he calculated it, but he got the sales tax that the Athertonians would be spending every year, and and adding that up, but I think that's where he got that number. But Prop A's been in business, what, twenty or thirty years? Jim, I don't know what your recollection is. Mine's not that good. But we're talking about a lot of money. So I think that limitations of finances, although important, are not overwhelming. I mean, money comes out of the woodwork when there's, when there's an accident or a serious problem occurs on a congestion on traffic. But it's usually ten years later before you can do anything about it, because it's so expensive. So I, I just, I think that the the city council should be aware of what's going to happen when it happens as far as the congestion. And if they don't do something to let the traffic flow, whether it be a trench or I guess, over a bridge or something, it's going to be a serious problem to get automobiles through town. And John, I think you had a concern it would back all the way up from to the railroad, railroad tracks to the El Camino. Is that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it does that now, just because of the red light at El Camino. I wonder if we could do a little study. Maybe we could work with Steve McCully and the Police Department to develop some, some numbers about the number of cars that go across those tracks. And if we estimate the number of trains, assuming that both Caltrain and high-speed rail do what they say they're going to do. And I don't know how long the gates are down, but you know, I could go out there with a stopwatch and get some idea of what happens at Fair Oaks Lane. And just ask the Police Department, you know, what are the implications of this? How many cars? If it's closed for that many minutes a day, what does it mean? And if you gather that information up and send it to the council.
Did you have your hand up, Bob?
Yeah, I did that study several years ago. I spent mornings out at the different grade crossings and looking at the traffic and looking at the downtime for the gates and figuring out what might happen in the future, and published a paper on it, which was circulated somewhere. And that work's been done.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Well, the conclusion is it'd be a terrible mess.
Yeah.
Bob, did you want to say something? Then I'll turn it to Robert. Okay, then Robert, go ahead.
I'm going to remind the committee that I think this item was raised in the EIR that came through for high-speed rail in this segment, and this is one of the items that we commented on as an area of concern, particularly not just on the, on the traffic side, but as well as the emergency response side. And so this is certainly an issue that is at the forefront of our concerns with high-speed rail in terms of what the gate downtimes are. And we did put it in our comment letter to high-speed rail on the EIREIS when it was out for public review. We anticipate that that'll be coming back. But I think we're digressing a little bit from great separations. But I understand that the relation with traffic impacts, and it is something that we are going to be keenly watching in terms of how they respond back to the comments. We're not the only ones that are going to be impacted by that.
Well, I think that we will be beneficial to know what Palo Alto's doing and how long it is and how much it's costing. So you get a order of magnitude of what the cost would be, because I think it's very comparable, based on a brief conversation Alex and I had with Pat Bird. Do you remember, Alex, what he said as far as the distance?
I didn't talk with Pat, but the, in terms of where Palo Alto's going through, their preference has been a trench or underground. It's just that the cost is significant. I think it was in the range of at least five hundred million for one crossing and maybe a billion for doing the two crossings in South Palo Alto. It's off the top of my head, but I can't quite remember what it was. And while Palo Alto hasn't completely removed it yet, I don't believe as a possibility. It's not going, I don't think it's going to happen. It's just too much money. And basically, no, they're going to be told if you want to have the trench, you guys got to pay for it. You know, the Fed state and a county are only going to give you so much. They'll give you enough to do the great separation, which would be raising the, raising the the rail or, and or lowering the road, but they're not going to give you everything to do a trench. Because it's, it's just simply too much. That's just my reading of what's going to happen politically.
Well, I was at the Palo Alto meeting when they discussed with the county what they were going to do, and if they didn't give them the seven hundred million, they were going to vote no the next time that tax came around. So I think that they're serious about getting, and I think they got seven hundred million dollars. That's not a drop in the bucket.
It's actually, it'll be probably one-third of that seven hundred million, because it's, it's seven hundred or eight hundred million for all the rail projects in the county. And there's three cities in there, Mountain View, Sunnyville, and Palo Alto that have Caltrain. And I think the agreement was, we want this rail money, or we're not going to vote for the, for the sales tax when it came around.
Right.
And it's, it's money over thirty years. So so the next time it's going to come around is, it'd be twenty-eight, twenty-seven years from now.
But they got the money on the last, the last one's just recent.
Yeah, this was, that was the most recent one where they, they got the money. And so the money's not coming in all at once, because it's a thirty-year sales tax. So they're going to get paid over time, and it's kind of at one point, Santa Clara will front the money to each rail project as it decides to great separate. But there's not going to be enough money, you know, two hundred million, that's not enough to do a trench for any of those Palo Alto undergrounds. So, and plus, where's the rest of the money going to come from, too? Palo Alto certainly can't afford for to foot the rest of the bill. So that, that's, that's going to be, I think they're going to have a choice where they're going to have to choose to do some kind of, you know, lower the road, raise the rail type of choice. And that, that's the most cost-effective one if they want to actually do the great separation. Otherwise, they're going to be waiting forever for getting the money to tunnel. And that's also the risk that Atherton might have, is that you know, the city council can go and say, we want to do this, but no one's going to want to spend that much in Atherton to pay for all of it. The state is not going
Robert, do you have access to their, their data? Because they've spent a lot of time and money on doing the engineering.
Who's data?
I just wonder if we could get some ballpark.
He means Palo Alto.
I can try and look for it.
Yeah, because I tried to find it. I couldn't find it. Pat said it was there. And I think they've, they're hiring the second engineering firm, because they weren't happy with the cost estimates of the first one. So they're very serious about
Cost only go up.
Well, I know, but they just felt that bad enough that they're replaced the engineer. So we'll see.
I'm, I'm not sure if changing the engineer is going to change the realistic cost of, of construction.
Right. Well, we'll see. They hired a new engineer.
And I'll send out one to her.
Okay, I'll, Greg, I'll send you what I have to. I'll look for, for some of the documents that, that they posted to. Was there any other things people wanted to discuss on, on this? Go ahead, Jack.
One thing that we ought to recognize is that if Fair Oaks Lane is great separated, it'll attract local traffic from Fifth It'll attract local traffic from Fifth Avenue through Atherton.
Okay.
Now say that, what is that point, Jack?
People, Jack was.
Separated. Attract some of the traffic that's now using Fifth Avenue to get across the tracks. And they'll come through Atherton on local streets. Like Fair Oaks Lane and Watkins.
I think he's trying to say people will avoid the congestion on Fifth Avenue and come through Fair Oaks instead.
Well, Fifth Avenue is great separated now.
Yes.
I I think to avoid congestion, they're they're going to choose other roads that that are great separated.
I go down that apparently occasionally, and there doesn't seem to be much of a traffic problem.
Oh, I go down just because I'm not that far away from it, Paul, and there is trap, there's a lot of trap.
Okay, I I withdraw my comment.
I avoid it as much as I can.
Yeah, they turn off the El Camino to Jack on a box and head right down, you're exactly right, Jim. And it's it gets to be a mess down there. And then you have the light at Middlefield, which even makes it worse. I avoid it too.
Yeah, I I think what makes the. The great separation, if you're doing a trench at. At Watkins expensive, Watkins and Fair Oaks is that we have the Atherton Channel and you have to get. The rail underneath the Atherton Channel, so it's got to be pretty deep. To do so, and if it's pretty deep and you only have at most 2% grade, you've got to start very far back. In Atherton and Meadow Park, and that's what's going to make it expensive. That's that's really the biggest thing that will make it expensive because you could raise the road a bit, something reasonable, but. The dig the father, the father down dig farther, you dig deep down, the more expensive it'll get for this type of project. And also the construction going on, I'm sure the Atherton residents are not going to be happy that. They're going to have to live through probably nightly construction for years. To do any type of trench because they're going to have to build a bypass. And then. And then, yeah, I I I think politically that that would kill it immediately just because. The people who live near the rail are going to have to deal with years of nightly construction. No matter what it what, no matter, even if it was cheap, it would have trouble politically to get past the council on just on that basis. Any other comments on this? Okay, why don't we move on to the next item?
So thank you, Chair, the next item is related to litigation. I think is was indicated in the previous. The appeal has been submitted to the State Supreme Court for consideration. Last I checked, I think that they provided an extension, Jim.
Let me give you the update, the update is as of today, just a few hours ago, it's not good news. We were alerted that they extended the time period for the appeal and comments. They submitted additional comments from from the other side, from the rail authority. And from us, my attorney, and we did that, gave us a lot of hope they were going to take it under consideration. I'm reading from the email this morning, very succinct. Petition for review denied, California Supreme Court. Stu Flashman's comment was FYI, oh, well, nothing ventured, nothing gained. That's it. That's it, that lawsuit is over. And I suppose, you know, I'll ask, we'll ask Stu if he can reapply and come within it again and maybe he can, maybe he can't. But I don't hold out any hope for it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Stand. Any questions or comments on this item?
Well, it's been a good fight, but. It didn't work.
Yeah.
And still has been very good at keeping this thing up and moving, but you can only do so much. I think we owe him a vote of thanks for all the effort he's put into it.
We ought to take him out for a really nice dinner.
Well, he's been paid for some of this, you realize, not a whole lot.
Be not such a.
We paid a lot more if we'd had any success.
Well, Mike Brady has done it for free.
Right, well, and and Stu gave us the pro voto rate. So Committee Coalition High Speed Rail funded the appeal, which was a bunch is $3,000. But that's where we are. It it's, I'll tell you to say, here's the big risk. Our, the point of the lawsuit, at least by the time it got to the to the specific appeal to the Supreme Court was that. Look, you can't pull a bait and switch on a bond measure. You can't say you're going to do A and do eh, B. Or B plus or something like that. You've you've got to do what you said you're going to do. Their reaction. At least from their filed papers was sort of like, hey, this is a real big project. So you don't have to be as specific on a huge project. As you do if you were just building, let's say, one grade separation or something like that. And. The Supreme Court apparently bought that argument. The problem is, and it may not happen, but I can see the problem is, and we were, we were hoping we could get some. To me from the bonded industry to to weigh in and encourage the Supreme Court to take the case. But but the the potential problem is that a bond issue comes along in the future. And people realize so, well, hey, I can vote for this. But they may actually not do it, they may just take this money and do something similar with it, but not what I voted for. And therefore not approve it. So. You know, the the actions of the California Supreme Court and the actions of the state of California on this whole. This whole proposition. Are risky and, you know, it's not without risk for the state and we'll have to see what happens.
Why don't we move on to the next item? Thank you, Jim. Item six, committee and staff member comments. Go ahead, Robert.
I do have one piece of information for the committee that you may find interesting. Last night at the council meeting, as the council was approving the continuing resolution with regards to emergency. There was conversation about. Transitioning to hybrid meetings. And so I believe at the next council meeting, the council will actually be meeting in the council chambers. And it will be done in a hybrid fashion. The council chambers is nearing completion and our city clerk has been done. The audio and video capabilities of the system. Staff has not, the rest of us have not been trained yet on that. But there is a a good chance not, I think. Which item nine will. Aside from that, the following meeting will likely be, we will be able to have a hybrid meeting in the council chambers.
Oh, it'd be great. So you're telling me if we have our meeting in April, we could be the first group to have a meeting in the council chambers?
The council meets following that? So the council is always first?
So we're not allowed on the day before, but they're okay. Well, that's the benefit of being on the council, I guess.
I don't, I don't think. All the bugs will get worked out hopefully before we get in there.
Well, maybe we should go to make sure the bugs get worked out.
Not a chance.
So that's, if you, I know that the the committee has been itching to be able to meet in person. And so the good news is is that as as we move forward, we have a. Good likelihood that we'll be able to do so soon, so.
It'll be good to see everyone in person again. Is. Okay, our, so I I think our plan is to cancel the meeting in April. Since it won't be that much change in the next two and a half weeks. Unless, does anyone think we need to have a meeting in April? Okay, then we'll we'll meet. Two and a half months from now, then.
Yeah, next regular meeting then will be in June.
In June, yeah. Any other member comments? If not, let's move on to the next item, no, any, no public comment, any agenda items for the future that anyone wants to suggest?
Well, I still want to look at this thing that Palo Alto is doing because they're spending a lot of money. They've spent a lot of money and I think it'd be foolish for us not to take advantage of what they're doing because the distance is about the same. That's the only point, and I don't know whether I should do this or the staff. But somebody should figure out what they're doing and how much it costs and what and what their plans are.
I can, Greg, I can send you what the the documents I have from what Palo Alto has studied because I've I've looked at it a bit. I can't quite remember what it's calculated, but they they've done some calculations, some preliminary engineering. And I think they're going to do an additional further engineering study. I'm not sure if it'll get cost, but more more engineering just to figure out. What challenges there might be in doing undergrounding or or trenching, but.
We can, if you'd like, we can coordinate offline, then I can distribute.
Sure, no problem. And then based on that, we can decide if we want to have a a discussion based on that.
Yeah, just remember, guys, when I was on the Transportation Commission of the state, we built a 20 mile trench for a billion and a half dollars.
You can't do it anymore, Greg.
Well, you never know.
What what year was that?
Well, it's been a couple of years.
Only a couple? At at 7% inflation?
You guys are a bunch of negative guys, you got to have a positive attitude.
Hey, we're on the rail committee.
Money comes from the sky, you just got to hold your hands on it, it'll come.
Okay, and no, are there any other agenda items anyone want to suggest? If not, next meeting is going to be in June. And motion to adjourn, anyone?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead, Greg.
The election is June 7th. So I I suggest we move it a week because I'm running for statewide office. As the state insurance commissioner.
Oh, okay.
So I prefer that we meet the following Tuesday.
The 14th?
Yes, unless somebody else has a conflict.
I was actually, I was thinking of moving into the 31st, but that's right after Memorial Day might not be good, so yeah, the 14th might be better. Does anyone, anyone object to the 14th is as a conflict? Okay.
I'd say that would be great.
So guys, on the 14th, we will celebrate Greg's. Win in the top two of insurance commissioner, is that is the primary, right?
That's that's right.
Okay, so we will, we will celebrate Greg's win in the primary.
Hey, I'll buy dinner if we win.
Okay. Well, we'll be meeting in the council chambers, so make sure to get it delivered.
All right, don't forget to vote, guys, June the 7th.
Absolutely.
All right, okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, a second, okay, all in favor? Hi, okay, see you guys, June 14th.
Great.
Patrick Staley. Nice job.
Thanks.